Ymina Tontesais, Natalie Hesaton-Guahan is back in session. We're back on second reading. We are continuing with Bill Number 109-36. And at our recess, Senator Perez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have a question for the author of the bill.
Please state your question.
Okay, so we're dealing with amending the Safe Haven Act. And generally, Safe Haven Acts have been enacted across the U.S. So some of the versions of it are basically, or maybe what happens in these jurisdictions is that the department assumes the custody of the child, of the infant, as an infant upon relinquishing of the child. And the department has responsibility for placing the infant usually in a pre-adoptive home and for the petitioning the court for termination of the birth parent's parental rights. Before the baby is placed in a pre-adoptive home, 14 states and the District of Columbia require the department to request the local law enforcement agency to determine whether the baby has been reported as a missing child. And that is included in this bill. In addition, five states require the department to check the putative father registry before termination of parental rights petition can be filed, which does not exist in the bill. Approximately 20 states and the District of Columbia have procedures in place for a parent to reclaim the infant, usually within a specified time period and before any petition to terminate parental rights has been granted. Five states also have provisions for the non-relinquishing father to petition for custody of the child. In 18 states and Puerto Rico, the act of surrendering an infant to a safe haven is presumed to be a relinquishment of parental rights to the child, and no further parental consent is required for the child's adoption. I guess, so the question that I have is, why was this version utilized over perhaps other versions that other states have? So for instance, having the father, putative father, be notified prior to placement, adoption placement?
Would the sponsor yield to the question?
I believe the question had to do with the question of paternity. It was very muffled. Is that, was that the question? If she can, what specifically are you asking me to answer? Because I'm not so clear.
Senator Perez, please repeat the question.
Yeah, so the general concept is, so we, in the bill, it talks about relinquishing the rights by the mother, but there's nothing for the father. And I'm wondering if that was intentional, or is that something that could be modified? Or what's the purpose of leaving that out, basically? Maybe that's my question.
Would the sponsor yield to the question?
The parental rights of the father, under our law, the Office of the AG would proceed with a person's in need petition and publicly notice the hearing and allow the father to be included in the discussion and participate in the proceeding. So due process rights for the father would remain as it has been under the current Safe Haven Act and Guam's Child Protective Act. So, so long as a child is unharmed, when relinquished, neither parent will be charged with abuse or neglect.
Senator Perez, please proceed.
Yes, thank you for that. But the bill itself states "mother," so if this bill is enacted, then it would remove the father from the process. And it would, in the language in this bill, it states that, on Section D, subsection D, it states that the mother has, okay, so basically it states that, notwithstanding any of the provision of law, CPS shall contact an adoption agency duly licensed under Guam law to take physical custody of the infant, provided that 48 hours have elapsed from the time of relinquishment by the mother. The mother has made, the mother has made no request for reunification to CPS, and the infant has not been reported missing. So what we see in other jurisdictions is they do have a process for the father, but this bill would take that out, basically, from the original statute.
Are you asking the sponsor to yield?
I, maybe I'm just kind of clarifying something right now, that currently in law, yes, the father, the kinships are all, you know, perhaps included, but what this bill would do, it would change that, sorry, can you hear me? So what this bill would do, it would remove the father and other relatives, because it's only focusing on the mother. So, and considering there are other Safe Haven laws throughout the United States, I mean, they have different elements integrated into it. So yeah, as far as the putative father registry, I mean, it's, you know, why, maybe the question is, why was that not included in this bill?
Are you asking the sponsor to yield to that question?
Maybe, I think she did answer, but I'll do, I'll have, yes, to maybe clarify that. Yes, thank you.
All right, would the sponsor yield to that question?
Yes, I want, thank you, Madam Speaker. What I want to point out is, in cases where there's a relinquishment of a child, it is generally presumed that the person relinquishing the child is the birth mother of the child. And so that's why the language is, takes that into consideration, that more than likely the person that is relinquishing the child is going to be the birth mother, who is presenting the, either delivers the baby at a clinic, at a hospital, presents the child to, to a firehouse, or calls 911 if this bill passes. So that's the general idea. But in terms of taking the father out, no, there's, there's no such thing as taking the father out, because there is built within the infant, Newborn Infant Safe Haven Act, those triggers that would, that would call for a petition to be granted, notices to be made, so that they would, they could establish if this child was in fact legally relinquished. And the father always has the right to petition, including cases where there, there's, you know, concern about kidnap, or even those types of scenarios. So no, it's just generally in this Newborn Infant Safe Haven, remember, this is a rescue type of situation, where a mother would abandon a baby, or just give birth to a baby within 30 days, want to give it up, relinquish her full parental rights. But that, it does not take the father out. And if you were to read Newborn Infant Safe Haven Act, those triggers are in there and in place. Thank you.
Senator Perez.
Okay, thank you. I do have another question. So how would this bill affect extended family members who may come at a later time, perhaps a week later, to petition for the child?
Are you asking the sponsor to yield to that question?
Yes.
Would the sponsor yield to that question?
This topic, this subject actually came up once before in the testimony when we were passing the Infant Safe Haven Act initially. And I would like to share. I just wanted, one of the things, and I'm trying, I'm going to, because it's a rather lengthy discussion that was provided by the Attorney General's Office, Mrs. Hinkle, Attorney Hinkle. And she mentions the noticing to the parents. And there is also, one thing that she pointed out with the Newborn Infant Safe Haven is that, at any time, say that there are circumstances that change after the 48-hour period of anonymity, and something changes, you can certainly petition for the placement of the child with relatives, or the mother herself can decide, you know, to change the status of her relinquishment and, and do that. So what I want to also point out is, not only is there a mechanism to, to change your mind after the 48 hours, and that's absolutely built in, but that, I also want to point out too, that in any proceeding, you're dealing with the rights of the mother, the rights of the child, and those really have to be the predominant consideration here as well. You know, what are the, what are the rights of the mother over her child? What are the rights of the child to protection under our laws? But in terms of, if somebody were to come in and, and want to change a status, or if somebody wants to herself change her mind, all of that is contemplated. And what we have to remember is, regardless of, of what stand we take at any one time, depending on the law, there are procedures generally in the adoption laws that are drawn out, that involve a period of time. And the finalization of any adoption is really precedent on two things. One, the supervision and guidance and approval by public health over the adoptive home, and whether it's in the best interest of the child determination, and the courts. So without those two things, nothing proceeds. But in, in the course of anything changing, minds changing, circumstances changing, that is all within the process, the due process, in accordance with our adoption laws and the rules and regulations in the GARR. So I hope I've, I've satisfactorily answered that inquiry. I certainly tried my best.
Please proceed, Senator Perez, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you for the response. I just think that I'm reading this bill very differently, that what we have in law does say that, exactly what the retiring speaker was saying. But what this bill would do, it would change that. It would only, according to this, if this bill becomes enacted, the mother only has 48 hours to consider. And so it, that, and the words is "notwithstanding any other provision of law." So it negates any of those laws that have those protections. And so I do, you know, I have reservations about that. I do have another question. You know, should an agency be in violation after an audit? And the agency is afforded the six months to remedy. What is the status? Do the adoptions still proceed? That's the question, if the author of the bill can so yield.
Would the author yield to that question?
The question is if somebody violates one of the conditions under the rules and regulations of adoption proceedings on Guam, will it still proceed? Again, it's a due process. If public health determines that there's some area of concern, and it's not in the child's best interest for the procedure to go forward, that will be their recommendation to the court, I would imagine. Similarly, if the court receives a recommendation to not proceed because of some violation of, of the adoption rules and regulations and Guam law, I would imagine that adoption would not go through. I'm just, you know, common sense thinking, but I just want to stress again, we have, we are guided by our adoption laws, by Child Protective Act, and by 26 GARR, the rules and regulations for adoptions on Guam. And I don't think that anything can deter from a strict following of all of those rules and regulations and statute. Otherwise, it won't be a lawful adoption that is sanctioned by the court and ordered by the court. And that's just my, my take on, on my understanding of how it is. Regardless of what happens in the process, everything is cured in the back end by Guam law and statute. Guam law and statute and the rules and regs in the GARR. Thank you.
Senator Perez, you have the floor.
Yeah, I have another question. So in looking at this bill, it seems to me, it's, it's trying to promote permanency, right? But I also feel it's, it's to a point where it is deprioritizing foster care. So it's prioritizing adoption over foster care. That's what I see, this, the possible effect of the, this bill. And I think there, there is a purpose for foster care, obviously. And in fact, I think in the original laws, federal laws out there, that, that's one of the, and it seems like this is perhaps the, the approach Department of Public Health is taking, is, you know, their prioritization of foster care. So if I could ask, and also maybe I can also expound a little bit in looking at some of the federal laws. So really, it's up to the jurisdictions I see that have more of the regulatory strength in enforcing adoption. There are federal laws in place, but they're, they tend to be more broad. I think in looking at some of them, there, there seems, there seems to be a trend too. And it seems like there's, there's a change that is happening, from what I can tell federally. Just maybe some thoughts about that. You know, in thinking about the Native Americans and how they were, a lot of the children were taken out of the homes for assimilation purposes, and, you know, that, a lot of the, I guess, the earlier policies were meant to address and provide safeguards, to ensure that we are taking into consideration the ethnicity of the child. And then, I think most recently, there, there have been laws where it, it swings the other direction, where you have, you open it up, and basically, agency cannot discriminate based on the ethnicity. So it seems to me that, you know, there, there's a shift in policy that's happening federally. And perhaps the question that I have for the author of the bill is, you know, what does she see as the ultimate policy goal behind this bill? Is it aligned with the Native American Act? Is it aligned more with the Multi-Ethnic Placement Act?
You're asking the sponsor to yield to that question?
Yes.
All right, would the sponsor yield to that question?
Madam Speaker, Guam has a crisis with its foster care system. We have 455 children in foster care right now. Bethany Taylor from Harvest House testified that the last thing they want to do is keep a healthy newborn baby that is eligible for adoption. They want to keep those babies out of the foster care system. One of the problems also that we have been told is that many of these children, once they enter the foster care system, have a very hard time exiting the foster care system. Infants entering care before three months of age spend 33% more time in care, according to the American Bar Association. Youngest children spend 50% more time in care than older children. And so, Madam Speaker, what, the only thing that we're trying to do is prevent a child who is legally relinquished, who is healthy and unharmed, we want to prevent them from being stuck in the foster care system, and place them with adoptive homes, so that they don't have to go through the foster care system. It's plain and simple. It's just streamlining the process and putting these children into stability and stable homes, where foster care system is not a stable system. Many of these babies get bounced around. So that's, that's all this is. And any concerns about ethnic standards, it all remains the same. The priority is to keep the children within their culture in Guam, you know, with little disruption or to their, what would be their, their normal lifestyle. It's basically consistent with adoption policies throughout the nation and on Guam in our statutes.
Senator Perez, you still have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you for the retiring speaker's comments, response. So yeah, I, I'm also thinking perhaps, you know, there, there definitely is a clash, right, of what, what is going to solve this, you know, I, you know, protection of our children, you know, foster care over adoption, and, or adoption over foster care. But I also think that, you know, there could still be middle ground. I mean, there, there has to be. I, I don't think it's an either/or situation. And I think that, you know, there's, there's room on both sides, because, you know, there are issues that can arise if we are prioritizing adoption as Bill 109 contemplates, or 108 contemplates. You know, I just think that, you know, without having the proper safeguards licensing for adoption agencies, I think that, that is, we're leaving a gap. And I think it's a responsibility to kind of foresee potential problems and address those ahead of time. I mean, maybe today we see the, the huge issue of placing children, right? That's, that's the overwhelming concern. But I think to be prudent, members of this body, I think it's also important to have this discussion, continue this discussion, to ensure that the regulatory framework is in place. I think in the end of the day, we all are promoting the welfare of our children and adoptive families. So actually, if I can request a moment's recess.
Is this for an amendment, Senator? Senator?
Yeah.
Oh, one, one minute recess. Ymina Tontesais, Natalie Hesaton-Guahan is back in session. Senator Perez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to reconsider the actions of the body regarding amendment proffered earlier. I would like to reconsider the actions of the body regarding amendment proffered earlier. This is regards to Senator Tadequie's amendment about changing "Shao" to "May."
All right, so the motion is to reconsider the actions of the body on floor amendment number one, which was to change the words "Shao" to "May" on page five, line 16. On that motion, I'm informed that that is a debatable motion. Is there anyone who would like to be recognized? A motion to reconsider a earlier floor amendment? Is there anyone who would like to speak? All right, so... Would you like to close on your motion, Senator Perez?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. So again, what this would do, it would authorize Child Protective Services, rather than mandate CPS, to, to contact adoption agencies duly licensed under Guam law to take the physical custody of the infant, provided 48 hours have elapsed from the time of relinquishment by the mother. The mother has made no request for reunification, and the infant has not been reported as a missing person. If there are multiple adoption agencies, CPS shall, shall contact the next adoption agency on a rotating list maintained by CPS until an agency agrees to take physical custody of the child. If no agency is identified, CPS shall take custody of the child. So I think, you know, after all the debates here thus far, I mean, there, there are definitely some deficiencies that need to be addressed that have, that have not been addressed. For one is, you know, 48-hour timeframe. Is that sufficient to know, to adequately assess the physical needs of the child and therefore which adoptive parents will be most suitable? The next thing is the mother. The mother has relinquished. There is no, there is no change as to whether the father or family are going to be involved. And so those are some of the issues, and that, that to me is an, is an important consideration that needs to be made. This, this otherwise would leave open a lot of gaps for all parties. And we're looking at the best interest of the child as well as those that are adopting the child. So I think it's important to allow that flexibility rather than completely remove it from current statute. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion to reconsider the amendment on page five, line 16, to change the word "Shao" to "May," there's been an objection. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes. Okay. We're now going to vote on the floor amendment itself. We are reconsidering it without debate. So all those in favor, is there any objection to this amendment? There's an objection. So all those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Motion fails. Senator Perez, you still have the floor.
I think I said everything that needed to be said. Thank you.
Thank you. On the bill, is there anyone else who would like to be recognized on the bill? On the bill? If not, then we will allow this sponsor to close on the bill. Senator Torres, you are recognized. Would you like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sadhus Massey, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of Bill 109 for the sake of our children and our young mothers who are in crisis. I think what we're doing with this bill is strengthening our safe haven act to provide a necessary lifeline to mothers in crisis. We're ensuring that relinquished infants are placed in safe and loving homes, and we are giving those who are involved with the safe haven process the tools to facilitate the process, giving them the resources to do it. These are difficult times for many in our community, young mothers who are distressed and unsure of what to do. And this, this bill today is vital to ensure that we protect these mothers and their children. Bill 109 also provides that we strengthen the chain of custody for these infants by including adoption agencies identified by CPS. And it gives our young mothers, mothers who are looking for options, the information that they need to be fully aware of their rights so that they can decide for themselves what is best for their family. In the end, I think one thing is clear. There is so much good that we can do through Bill 109. In supporting this bill, we are choosing to recognize the issues that are often overlooked, hard issues. We are choosing to help our young mothers and their children, ensuring that they are protected and safe, and we are choosing to better the system. We are choosing to protect the most vulnerable of our population, Madam Speaker, and so I rise in support of this bill today.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, is there any other senator who would like to be recognized on the bill? If not, then the sponsor may close on the bill.
Madam Speaker, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank my colleagues for the discussion on this bill, for those that brought up points of concern and, and those that brought up points in support of the measure. And I respectfully move that this bill number 109-36 be placed on the third reading voting file.
Thank you. On the motion, is there any objection to the motion being, uh, the bill being placed on the third reading? Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, motion carries. We are now on bill number 121-36 that was passed on file. Senator Sinagastin, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, I ask that the indulgence of the, my colleagues that we have prepared a substitute bill of 121 pending the Bon, Mark, the Bon Council of Greta to respond, and they, they ask none till 8:00 AM tomorrow morning, so if I can bring the 121 back on the floor tomorrow morning.
Senator Sinagastin, there's a motion to pass on file, Bill 121. We have, is there any objection to passing that on file? Senator, okay, and then there is a, we have exhausted our second reading file. Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I ask that we move back to motions. Notwithstanding.
There's a motion notwithstanding the House rules to go back to motions. Is there any objection to returning to motions? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We are in motions.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, um...
Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to be able to move Bill number 140-36 LS as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations Appropriations and Housing. It is a bill sponsored by myself and all members of this body. It's an act to add a new chapter nine to Title I of Guam Code Annotated relative to creating the Guam Humanitarian Service Award to recognize all support efforts by individuals for disasters or declared emergency operations and activities.
There's a motion to place Bill number 140-36 LS as amended by the committee onto the second reading file.
And if I can amend that motion, ma'am, second reading and onto the agenda.
And, and what, sorry?
Onto the agenda session this current...
Yes, onto second reading. Is there any objection to placing Bill number 140-36 as amended into the second reading? Any objection? Hearing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I also move to motion that Bill number 120-36 COR as substituted by the Committee on General Government Operations Appropriations and Housing introduced by myself, Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes as co-sponsor. Also co-sponsors are Senator Joe S. and, uh, Joe Sinagastin, Senator Jose Pedro Tulahe, and Senator Mary Kamatra Torres. The bill is an act to amend subsection 10107 and add a new subsection 10107.1 to Chapter 10 of Title III Guam Code Annotated relative to permanently establishing early in-office absentee voting. Madam Speaker.
On the motion to place Bill number 120-36 as substituted by the committee onto the second reading, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Are there any other motions? We will take a five min... We're going to take a one-minute recess. I'm in a chintai size, now Lisa Turen Guam is back from recess. And we are back on second reading, and we are now on Bill Number 140-36 LS as amended by the committee. Senator Blaschier, I recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move Bill 140-30 LS as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations and Housing, sponsored by myself and all members of this esteemed body, which is an act to add a new chapter nine title of Title I Guam Code annotated relative to creating a Guam Humanitarian Service Award to recognize all support efforts by individuals for disasters or declared emergency operations and activities. Into the third reading file, ma'am, and I'd like to be able to speak on it.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, as has been evident over the last basically 15, 16 months, our island has experienced basically in a disaster or an emergency unprecedented and never once ever before experienced by our people. And to get us through a lot of the fears and the concerns that have... There were many people that have gone, for lack of a better term, to the rescue, have put their lives on the line, and in some cases, unfortunately, have lost their lives to be able to help our people get through this disaster. There are other disasters that our committee has experienced before, where if it wasn't for the heroic and the brave efforts, and albeit, in many cases, these were individuals that they were trained to do. They were called to duty to be able to provide, and then when the rubber needed to hit the road, they had no hesitation in being able to provide that service. As a matter of fact, Madam Speaker, I'd be remiss to be able to thank one of our own members of this esteemed body for her continued service and for her service during the last disaster, I mean, during this existing disaster. It's because of people like this, Madam Speaker, that a lot of times, after we get through it, and granted, we've got billboards and there's newspaper ads and there's even, in some cases, you know, interviews of wanting to thank those that were a part or assisted in the disaster, but I felt that it was really time to be able to really be sincere about the gratitude that we have as a people to those individuals in our community and outside of our community that have come to the assistance of the aid of our island and our community. So what this legislation proposes, Madam Speaker, is to provide, is to create what is known as the Guam Humanitarian Service Award, where we'll be able to provide that recognition, the recognition that is so deserved by many of these people, and a lot of times, many of them uncalled, many of them we don't know, but I think that they need to be, they need to be recognized for the service that they have provided and for the help and the assistance they've given to the community to be able to help us to get through disasters, not just disaster, but any other disasters that we may have in the future. Knock on wood, but it's going to be inevitable. There's going to be a disaster. There's going to be a time when these individuals are going to have to be called from their homes. They're going to have to leave their families. They're going to have to stand in the way of danger. And unfortunately for some of them, they're going to give the ultimate sacrifice. And this legislation will provide a recognition that is so well-deserved. It provides for the governor to be able to create service awards for every member of our community, not just government workers, not just uniform personnel, but, you know, those individuals that work in the private sector, those individuals that work in nonprofit organizations, those good Samaritans that just come up to be able to help. These people need to be recognized. They need to be thanked. This provides that formal opportunity for our government in behalf of our people to provide them that gratitude. Furthermore, Madam Speaker, other than for the governor to provide that service or that award, is then, I put in the legislation that for prosperity purposes, that our body to receive the names of these individuals and the services they've provided so that we can append it to our legislative journal. So like in the area of United States Congress, if family members down the low road want to find where their mother, their father, their brother, their sister were honored for their service, they can find that in the journals of our records here. So, Madam Speaker, first off, I want to thank each of my colleagues, all 15 of us, that saw that this is legislation, this is an award that we can all stand behind, that are truly deserving of those individuals that continue to provide the service for us, continue to protect our safety, continue to protect our lives. And for some of them, unfortunately, they gave up their lives to protect ours. We need to honor them. And I want to thank my colleagues for all of them, for your willingness to be able to co-sponsor. This is not just a bill that's sponsored by myself. I'm glad to say that as a result of all 15 members, this is a legislation, this is a legislation sponsored by the 36 Guam Legislature. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On Bill Number 140-36 LS, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized? On Bill Number 140, anyone else? If not, then Senator Blaschier may close on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, I appreciate because I think everything has been said. And so, Madam Speaker, with that, Madam Speaker, I move to place 140-36 LS into the third reading file.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Bill 140 is placed on the third reading file. We are now continuing under second reading with Bill Number 120-36, 120-36 COR as substituted by the committee. Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill Number 120-36 COR as substituted by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations and Housing, introduced by myself and co-sponsored by Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Senator Joe S. Augustine, Senator Jose Pedro Tulahe, and Senator Mary Camacho Torres, which is an act to amend subsection 10107 and add a new subsection 10107.1 to Chapter 10 of Title III Guam Code annotated relative to permanently establishing early in-office absentee voting. Request to move that to your third reading file, Madam Speaker.
On that motion, please proceed, Senator Moylan.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Last year, due to the pandemic, the Guam Legislature passed a measure to allow for early in-office absentee voting for the 2020 general election. This process has proven to be an extremely popular option for voters, as over 12,000 island residents took advantage of the opportunity, as they did not have to present a reason for voting early. Current Guam law allows for early absentee voting if the voter provides legitimate reason and evidence of their inability to cast a vote on Election Day. Now, if enacted, this legislation will provide for a 30-day window for early in-office absentee voting, and this would be a permanent option for all future elections. There will be no reason for early, and no reason for early voting would be needed. Now, while the intent of the early voting option was to promote safety for all parties in 2020, many voters were ecstatic with the streamlined process and the realities that one did not have to present a doctor's note, airline ticket, or some documentation on which they would not be able to vote on Election Day. It was simple, and you just had to bring your ID, be provided a ballot, mark your ballot, and then be sealed. The Guam Election Commission did testify at the public hearing and provided written testimony on June 22, 2021. They noted that before 2020, duration of in-office absentee voting was for 30 days with about 1,000 voters participating on average for the general election. Now, over 12,000 voted early in 2020 general election. And the Guam Election Commission stated, yes, this will promote voter participation. The Guam Election also submitted recommendations and an amendment to the bill that was introduced, and that's the reason for the substitute version that we submitted. All the recommendations that were provided by the Guam Election Commission were included in the substitute version, and therefore, they are in full support of this amended version, substitute version. I thank you, Madam Speaker, and look forward to the discussion on this bill.
Thank you, Senator. On Bill Number 120-36 COR as substituted by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations and Housing, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized? On Bill Number 120, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized? If... Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just want to rise in support of this Bill 120-36 and thank the good author for giving me an opportunity to be a second co-sponsor. And the intent of this bill, again, Madam Speaker intends to permanently establish early in-office voting, absentee voting to no more than 30 days or less than five days before the election date, and qualified Guam voters may vote via absentee voting without conditions such as being off-island, having an illness, physical disability, or serving in the armed forces. Madam Speaker, I think this is a good effort. I don't know if our colleagues heard the executive director from the Guam Election Commission speaking to one of the radio personalities this morning, I guess it was this morning or the other day, talking about how we really need to beef up our election to have our people, our community, take the time to vote, because we went from, I guess, a while ago, from 80% down to 60%, and this last election in 2020 was down, if I'm not mistaken, to 53% or 57%, which is really, really, I don't know, at least for me, is disheartening, because it just shows that we need to do something as policymakers to give the opportunity for more people to take the time to vote, and this is one way of doing that. And I want to thank the good author for giving me that opportunity to be a part of this, and I ask my colleagues to support that effort, just because I remember the day when I was really, really young, having our parents and our grandparents go from campaign to campaign, election to election, and then the voting percentage was up to the 80s, 80%. I mean, Guam had one of the highest, if not the highest, per capita on voting for their elected officials. So this bill, Madam Speaker, is a vehicle that can help drive up the votes and give the people the opportunity to come in on an earlier date. So, thank you, and I rise in support of this measure. Sign him off.
Sign him off. On the bill, Senator Torres, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I also rise in support of the bill, and I think what the good author is doing is he's providing more opportunities and incentives for people to become involved in the voting process, in the election process on Guam. And through the years, this body has removed a lot of barriers and made it easier for people and convenient for people to register to vote, including online registration capabilities, motor voter capabilities, just so that it's more convenient for people. Because when convenience comes into the picture, it relieves people and it gives them more of an incentive and less of an excuse not to bother to vote. So with this measure, it just adds that cushion of being able to avail of a time period, because one of the things that we've also recognized is that when there is no declared holiday on Guam, the voter turnout tends to be affected, because people feel that they're inconvenienced when they take off from work, even though there are, you know, that there are provisions for employers to relieve their employees to go to vote. Oftentimes, that act of leaving their workplace to vote, you know, disincentivizes them regardless. So I think that the more that we do to get people and encourage them to come out and vote and make it a lot more efficient and at their convenience, I think the better will be at realizing greater voter turnout. So I applaud the author for continuing to look at other voter reforms like this. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Tai Tukui, you are recognized.
So just, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I didn't have a chance to go to this particular public hearing. However, I did read some of the comments that were made and concerns that were made. And one of them, Madam Speaker, I believe was, you know, this, of course, was, it said that... This is prior to the law being repealed in public law 31-58, and it was asked that what is a law prior to the repeal of 31-58, that our testimony here, were you making the amendment? Okay, basically, it's asking, so it would be better to go back to the way the law was for early voting prior to the repeal of law 31-58, was a question that was asked. And the director said, you know, she excused herself, she wasn't here during that time, did not go back to the original, to that part of the code that was mentioned. And... And then it was asked here, so that was part of the law prior to the repeal of the law, so probably something that we can take a look at and see what the difference is from prior to the repeal to what's being introduced today. And then the director said, yes, I'll get back to you before this goes to session. Thank you. So I'm curious to see or hear and like to ask the author of this legislation, did the director come back, you know, before session to talk about this change and that this bill could be simply go back to the way it was instead of having to change it? So if the author of the legislation would yield to let me know if there was a prior letter or not a prior, I know there was a prior letter, but is there an updated letter?
Would the sponsor yield to that question?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Based on the June 22 letter, Maria Pangalina did go back to the commission, and they worked on the amendments to this bill. They discussed this bill quite thoroughly with the commissioners. Their attorney was also involved and made the recommendations. I think the best response I can give to the question is, as what is stated on the 622 letter, they made recommendations that early voting should be a separate news section of 3GCA Chapter 10, and they presented it below in their letter. This was verbatim and taken and added as the substitute bill that we are now discussing. If they wanted to do anything else, they would have probably added on, but they did not. If we go back to the old, well, then there's, you got to make your verification on why you needed to have an absentee voting. The Guam Election Commission doesn't want to do that anymore. They're in favor of this bill. It says it will promote voter participation, and that's their job, and that's why they're in favor of this, and that's why they took it in detail in making their recommendations that are all included in the substitute version that we're discussing today. So I recommend that we move forward in what the Election Commission has thoroughly vetted in favor of this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Taitikui, you have the floor.
Thank you. And so basically, what the author is saying is, no, there's not a letter that she would provide after the public hearing, which she said she would get back to the legislature to discuss this thoroughly. And the only letter I'm seeing is the one that she presented during public hearing, which is on June 22. But I don't see anything in here, and I think it's very important, Madam Speaker, I mean, this is the Guam Election Commission. This is all how we got to sit here today and all the other elected officials. It's something that we shouldn't take lightly. It's something that we should get the advice from the Guam Election Commission moving forward. Something, and I think, Madam Speaker, it's important we hear from them if there is any changes to the question that was asked by one of the senators, and she said she would get back to us. And the author of the bill clearly is just using June 22 letter that was provided during the public hearing and didn't get back to us. So, Madam Speaker, if we can take a short recess, I'd like to really make sure that, you know, there was nothing that she wanted to add to this or any concerns or circumstances that may make it difficult for the Guam Election Commission. I mean, last year, we didn't have a primary. It was easier for the Guam Election Commission to do what they were doing because there was no primary. You're looking at a timeframe, Madam Speaker, from the primary to the general, 60 days, and 30 of those days are enough time to get the early voting in. Can they really do it? But, Madam Speaker, I just think it's important for this body to hear from the Guam Election Commission and not take it upon ourselves to just say, it's okay, we don't need to hear from them, even though they said in the testimony that they would get back to us. So I ask, Madam Speaker, if we could take a short recess or even talk to the Oversight Chair, who might have gotten some word from him, at least we can do that.
All right. We'll take a five-minute recess.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
All right. We're back from recess. Senator Taitikui, you had the floor. Would you like to yield to Senator San Agustin, the committee chair?
Yes, Madam Speaker, thank you.
Senator San Agustin?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I ask that we move to committee of the whole, and I have contacted the executive director of the Guam Election Commission. She's on her way. She might be ready outside. We can just recess, but we proceed to committee of the whole, and then we can discuss the bill.
All right. On the motion to resolve into the committee of the whole, is there any objection? We are resolved into committee of the whole to hear the rest of Bill Number 120-36. We are resolved into Committee of the Whole to hear the rest of Bill Number 120-36.
My colleagues and to the people of Guam, the Committee of the Whole is called to order. Rules of engagement at this Committee of the Whole. We will have one round of questions for the panel. It's a very simple bill. Will each senator allotted five minutes for questions, not including responses? Time to speak may not be used from more than one member to another. A member who uses that member's time on a question, uses all that member's time on that question. May not later speak, even if all the time used was not used. As in, conforming with Section 1.02d3 on our standing rules. At the completion of the round of questions, panels will be excused until called upon for the next, if we had another bill, and we don't. Amendments to each bill will be entertained after the round of question. After complete amendments on the bill, we will see them. Trying to skip some of my rules here. I will now, after complete the amendments. If there's any amendments, then we will proceed with the amendments after we have this. Release the, excuse the panel. I will now call upon the Senate Lords to please swear in the panel. We have Ms. Pangalina and Mr. Sinagastin. Please rise.
Can you raise your right hand? Under penalty of perjury, do you all affirm that any and no information that you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Mr. Chair, under oath, you may proceed.
Thank you, Senate Lords. I now ask the author of the Bill 120 to please make comments before we proceed to the questions. And we will begin from the rear, which will be Senator Telotidwi, and then proceed around the room. Senator Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for convening the committee as a whole and welcome to Maria Pangalina. Mrs. Sincoms has received further information on this bill. It's document number 366L210755. It's quite lengthy, but I appreciate that Guam Election Commission did put together a summary report. And, Mr. Chairman, I just want to highlight that the final paragraph on the summary report, it reads, "In the 2020 general election, 53% of Guam's registered voters exercised their right to vote, which is a 14% decrease from the 2018 general election. While much of this decline in participation can be attributed to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Guam Election Commission humbly asks that favorable consideration be given to declaring by statute the general election day a government of Guam holiday as a means to increase voter participation and have a higher caliber of precinct officials." Basically, just kind of also staying with the original letter of previously, which I have read. So I appreciate the opportunity for my colleagues to ask further questions regarding Bill 120. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. My colleagues, we will begin the round of questions. We will begin with, from the rear, Senator Telotidwi. You had a question before we moved to the Committee of the Whole, ma'am?
Sisusmasi, Mr. Chair, and thank you. And thank you so much, Maria and Tom, for coming down on such short notice. I greatly appreciate it. You know, it's important that you're here and to answer any questions we have because, you know, this has to do with our ability to sit here and we don't want to make it look like we're doing anything to take advantage of anything at all as something as important as an election. So I really appreciate you being here. I just had a question that during the public hearing, one of the senators had asked about, so would it be better to go back to the way the law was for early voting prior to the repeal of Law 31-58? And so in other words, wouldn't it just repeal the law? And if there's any amendments that you have to just make that happen right then and there instead of, you know, writing a whole other law to it? So that was one of the questions and then that was asked of you. And then you mentioned that, yes, I'll get back to you before this goes to session. Thank you. And you mentioned that you were not here, you know, prior to some, the bill passing, the original bill, 31-58. And you would get back to us before session. So I'd asked about if there's any information that you can provide from that questioning and looking forward to your comments that you said you would get back to the session, I mean, to this body before session.
Thank you, Senator. I must apologize. It was a question that Senator Tony Ada asked with regard to what was Public Law 29-32 that was repealed. Should that law, should that be the law to be put in place? My answer is no. There have been changes to the law and those changes to the law have been incorporated into what we submitted in our testimony. into what we submitted in our testimony. So that might be, that's, as far as the Guam Election Commission goes, is a better fit than to put in place 29-32.
Thank you so much for that. There was also the, you spoke about the testimony that you provided. And in the testimony, it said the Guam Election Commission estimates the additional cost of early voting to be about $175,000 per election. And to continue to conduct fair and honest election, the cost must be included in the Should this bill be enacted into GCA, enacted the GCA respect requests that the GEC official fiscal note of 2022 budget be increased to 2.84,179 to cover the cost of early voting for the 2022 primary election? Okay, first, when I was doing the math on this, and what was provided in 2020, when this body appropriated to the Guam Election Commission, 1.399, is that correct? That was the budget that was submitted for the 2020 FY?
I'm sorry, Senator, I don't have my figures in front of me.
Okay. Well, I looked this up. What we appropriated for, for the Guam Election Commission was 1.39900. And then, that being said, if we were to appropriate the same amount of money, but include the additional 175,000 per election, which is 350, you come up with, I mean, I did the math and add it together, and it comes out to 1.749, so 1,749,000. But in your testimony, you're requesting for 2,84,179. Can you tell me what's the difference?
So, our request for fiscal year 2022, which will include the funding for the 2022 primary election, our initial request was 1.9. If you add up the 175,000, it'll become over $2 million.
But what was appropriated, oh, so this is the amount of money that you're requesting on behalf of the Guam Election Commission, is 1.9 million?
For 2022, ma'am.
Okay. But in 2021, 2021, what was appropriated in 2021 was 1.630235. So there's still, you know, we had 1.3 in 2020, and then this budget, 2021, was 1.6 million. And then now you're requesting for 2022 without the early voting, 1.9 million. So there's an increase regardless. Can you tell me what that increase is all about and what's up for, without the primary and the general of early voting? Because it's obvious there is a six, almost $300,000 increase from the FY 2021 budget to the one for your requesting for 2022.
So, every even fiscal year funds a primary election. The cost of a primary election, or the fiscal year, the even fiscal year, is a bigger budget because of the preparation for both the primary and the general. That's the difference. With regard to what is appropriated and what is asked for, if you look at what we asked for, if it's not, we try, we do our due diligence to be, you know, to safeguard the trust of the public and spend as little as we can, but we come to you for supplemental when we need it. At this point in time, fiscal year 2021, the Guam Election Commission is relying on continuing appropriations to get us through the fiscal year.
I'm sorry, say that again?
This fiscal year 2021, we are relying on continuing appropriations that are available to us to carry us through the end of fiscal year.
Which is 1.6 million 3235, correct?
Right. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and the other question, so, well, the bill doesn't have any funding in it, as you requested in your letter. It's almost if this bill were to pass, then we're, basically, our hands are tied. We would have to fund it because it's considered law that the primary is needed, and we're going to have to go through with it. However, and we know that during the carers grant, you had received about $600,000 from the carers grant funding. So my next question is just real simple. If you have a 30-day window between the primary and the general to get it up and ready for early voting, is that really enough time for the Guam Election Commission to do so?
Thank you for asking that. We have requested in the past, and when we submitted our legislative recommendations for this year, we did request that the primary election be held on the first Saturday of August instead of the last Saturday of August. With regard to early voting, during 2020, we actually conducted early voting for the council primary. We were able to get early voting off the ground for the general election. So you're asking me if we have enough time? We would really appreciate it if the primary election was moved to the first Saturday of August or sooner.
Which would give you a little bit more time, correct?
Ma'am, the biggest challenge for us at the Guam Election Commission is that the military and overseas voters' ballots must be out to them 45 days before the election. In the primary, that's usually not a big challenge, but in the general, the time between the primary and the general, that's a huge challenge.
Your issue, is it, is this addressed in this legislation?
We found, no, ma'am. We found out that to update the election code over my tenure, tenure at the Guam Election Commission, it's best to compartmentalize the updates to the code. So if you go through the comparative analysis report, we've outlined that for you.
Okay. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think, if anything, you know, just hearing that particular issue that they have, and just this short timeframe as they prepare for the general from the primary, I think that's something that we should make an amendment to, into this legislation to address that issue, because that's a bluntly clear issue. But you do, you do an excellent job, your team, Tom, has always been accommodating. You've just got a great team working, working with you at the Guam Election Commission. And we want to make sure that we give you all the tools you need to, like you said in your testimony, a fair, a fair election, safe and fair election. So, thank you. Or honest, that's it, conduct a fair and honest election. Thank you so much, Maria. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Telo. Senator Frank, do you have any questions for the Guam Election Commission?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, ma'am, sir, for being here today. You know, I'm just, just to add on to concern or question that was brought on by Senator Telo. Can you explain as best you can, you know, basically, the process from what you need to do and the timeframe you'd like to have between the primary and the general election to give us an idea? Because what this bill basically proposes is a 30-day window on this thing. So what are you up against?
So first off, the primary election has to be certified. When the primary, after certification of the primary election, then we'd have to do ballot placement drawing again.
10 business days after the primary.
Then, after we have the ballot placement, it takes us a few days to get the ballot itself finalized. When the ballot gets finalized, we'd have to prep, we've already prepped probably all the envelopes to be sent to the Yuakava voters. That's our main mission immediately after the primary. So it has to be 45 days before. That's the latest we can send it. That in and of itself, those main activities is what, is what keeps us more than busy. And we need to think that in between there, we are accepting your campaign finance reports as well. Registration, voter registration comes back up immediately after the primary election. We continue to, we continue to service the candidates, so it's really, really busy in between there, sir.
Okay, so, you know, what the bill basically proposes is at least 30 days, up to 30 days before, I mean, to start early voting. Okay, so, right now, we're looking at, I think I was the author of that bill that moved it from September to August, right? So that puts you 30 days, 10 days. How long does it normally take for ballots to get, you say it certifies after 10 days? So you're talking about probably the second week of September, right? Second week of September for the primary results to be certified.
I'm sorry. A big thing in our law is that we have to wait 10 workdays after the...
Oh, working days?
Yes.
Okay, so that changes, because that's adding four more days to this whole clock.
10 workdays after the, because we have to, we have to give time for the off-island ballots to come in.
Before you can certify?
Before we certify.
Okay, so you're looking basically about mid-September for that process to finish. And then you said then you have to go through, then ballot placement?
Yes, sir.
Right? So that takes you to about the third week of September. And then, from there, you need to put, how long does it take to print ballots?
Hopefully, we don't have kinks in the system, and sometimes we do. In 2014, I believe, we did. And it's not in terms of operations, but in terms of making sure we follow the law in terms of names. We don't have that anymore. The Commission established a policy that says everybody has to use their legal name, if you remember what we had to go through. So if there's no kinks, it takes our, it takes Joe about five to seven days. But, sir, that's five to seven days, almost around the clock.
Yes, I understand. My concern here is I just don't want to overburden the Guam Election Commission in 30 days, as ideal as we would like to have it. I think that over the last, basically, over the last year, we've seen that Mr. Murphy, you know, can jump into all of our plans. I am in support of early voting. I really like the whole idea and the whole process, but I also have to be practical, pragmatic about the whole thing and making sure that this process doesn't impede upon the other, you know, legal processes that are necessary so that there is no, you know, you're not jumping through the hoops to try to make the 30-day mandate, and then, you know, everything else, you know. Yeah. So, I'm just interested in as far as you, you know, you threw a huge wrench into the whole thing by saying, "I prefer to have it in the first week of August." I almost choked on the peanuts that I was chewing on back here, because that's a whole other bill than what we've got right here. Okay? Again, it's, again, I am in favor, and I appreciate it, and I do respect, you know, the early voting, but I think that, you know, again, being pragmatic, the wants versus the needs here, there's got to be a balance here, so I'm just trying to find that balance, and I'll continue to listen to the conversations that we have. Anything else that you...
Senator, in the amended, in my testimony, in the Guam Election Commission testimony, we did request for early voting to close five days or seven days before election day. So that's what we're requesting to close, to prep these thousands of ballots that we anticipate to come in, to prep them, to send them to the precinct.
Okay, well, you know, fortunately, the legislature has the ability to stop the clock, but we can't stop the calendar. So, we'll see how we can be able to work that out. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And now ticking along, Senator Trelawney, do you have any questions?
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. And before I share my thoughts, I just want to thank the director and the staff for being here on a very short notice. I just wanted to, to talk on the, and I would guess that maybe the director have gone through the Bill 120, and I guess they're requesting for at least $1.9 million for the year 2022. I just wanted to ask this question. What is your take on Bill 120?
Please repeat, sir. I didn't...
Are you, are you in, are you satisfied with the early voting that has been articulated on Bill 120?
With, you know, Senator Boylan and Senator Sinagustin said they were going to take the amendments into account, and so I'm, I trust that those amendments were made to the bill. Yes, I am in favor if the amendments that were made to the bill were incorporated. Yes.
So, Madam Director, we can expect that you might be sending us some kind of revision on the bill or anything else? And I support Bill 120, but we need your input on just what we need to work on to refine the bill at your satisfaction. I want to thank you, Madam Director. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Trelawney. Senator Clint, do you have any, none? Senator Perez, do you have any questions for the panel?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Maria Pangalina and Tom, thank you for being here. Yeah, I just was looking over the previous law in 2010 and why it was halted, and a lot of the errors were double, potential double voting. And so I guess maybe my question is, are you satisfied that those errors can be eliminated with this current, with the current amendments that were proposed by GEC?
I'm sorry, Senator, I did not understand.
Oh, okay, let me speak closer. So in looking at the previous early voting law that was repealed, I think one of the main issue was there was a potential for double voting. In this current bill, 120-36, do you see that these amendments would address those potential errors?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Senator. In 2010 is what I'm familiar with, in 2008, I believe, both, the Commission was understaffed. And so now, we want the legislature to know that what it takes to have good, efficient, and effective early voting would be an additional 175,000. would be an additional 175,000 to give us more staff for early voting and to make sure that those ballots are kept, you know, we keep the sanctity of that ballot. So yes, the question is, the, yes to your question, ma'am. We've addressed those.
Okay, so it's through additional, um, additional staffing that would help assure the sanctity of the ballots?
Uh, Senator, I must at this time say that with your support, we have kept the institutional knowledge at the Guam Election Commission. Um, Joe Isaki and Tom Sin Augustin have been there for over 16 years. So in 2008 and in 2010, they were there for early voting as well. And so we have that with us. Um, that's something that's not, that I cannot put a value to inside the, um, the budget bill or the testimony, but that's the biggest value we have with us. Is with your support, we can keep ourselves going. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that response. Um, so the other thing is the homebound voting. Uh, what kind of safeguards are there to assure that, um, perhaps, I mean, other than the affidavits, is that, is that the safeguard that we have to assure that, um, the person voting, uh, is that person? And, um, yeah, what type of safeguards are there?
Um, yes. So we do have an application for absentee voting. The bill as amended simplifies it a little bit. Also, the affidavit is actually printed on the envelope, the ballot envelope itself. So in the process, our election clerks look at their IDs, verify that that's the person in front of them. They fill out the application form. After that is done, they fill out the affidavit.
Okay, so somebody's gonna be at the House to verify that. Okay, okay, good. So going back to the, the issue about, um, the interval between the primary and the general election. So what date would you suggest to be the, to give you enough time? Uh, what, what date would you suggest for the primary?
Um, I apologize again to Senator Frank Blas Jr., but we had asked for the first Saturday in August.
Okay, thank you.
Senator Perez, were you asking a question about the dates or something? I'm trying to catch-
Yeah, yeah, so yeah, the question was, um, I guess to clarify what date would be recommended to have the primary election, uh, to implement-
We're only talking about early voting, Senator Perez? Uh, anything else? That was brought up by Senator Tello. Anything else outside of this bill? We can address that in a new bill because the Election Commission has been communicating me as the oversight. And we're trying to work those bills and introduce them timely. Because it's no different that this bill doesn't identify funding. We'll deal with that when we get to the budget part. And that, until this bill passes, there's no issue for money. And we'll just move from there. All right?
Yeah, the, the question was related to Senator Tello's question. So, um, yeah, just one more question. Um, if I can add on another question. So, um, Director Pangolinan, you're mentioning that, um, there, a code needs to be revised in order to accommodate earlier voting of the primary is, how long would that take to make those changes? You know, if this bill were to pass, uh, to kind of give you more breathing room to carry out an election, uh, how quickly can the code be changed?
Please repeat your question, ma'am.
It's my mask, I think. Um, so yeah, the, I guess I want to follow up a question regarding revision of code. I believe you mentioned that earlier. To change any date of an election, it would require the revision of the code. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, ma'am, we cannot understand.
Okay, so you, you recommended that the first Saturday of August would be ideal, should this bill pass. But it would require the revision of code? Or if you can clarify that?
Uh, yes, ma'am. It would require changing code.
Okay, and so the, my question is, how quickly can that change? Or what timeframe would you need to change the code?
As I'm speaking with the executive director, any changes in the law depends on the bill being introduced so we can address it right away. It's that simple. Because the election's not till next year, Senator Perez. But I agree with you. We need to make changes and we're gonna go through those motions to make the changes. And if you could introduce the bill, I would address it as soon as possible too, on behalf of the executive of the Election Commission.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director and Tom.
Thank you. Senator Shelton? None. Senator, uh, Madam Vice Speaker, you have any questions?
Yes.
For the panel? Thank you.
Situs masi, Mr. Chair. Um, you know, the intent of this bill, um, is really, um, to permanently establish, um, early, um, early voting. So more than, so no more than 30 days or less, or less than five days before the election date. Am I right? Right? And qualified Guam voters may vote via absentee voting without conditions such as being off-island, having an illness, physical disability, or serving in the armed forces. Am I right?
Yes, Senator.
And then I know that there was a 228-page or so report that was submitted, a comparative report from the Guam Election Commission that was submitted today. And I know the good author of this legislation spoke on a measure to that, that effect. Is that correct? Right?
Yes, Senator.
So today, having submitted that report, the, uh, that report outlines a critical concern. We have less people showing up to the polls. And for democracy to work, we need participation. Will this measure make voting, voting more accessible?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I ask that because I know that with the recent cancellation of the primary and having to vote, the in-house voting, absentee voting for just the 2020 election alone garnered 12,900 voters. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So the efforts of supporting this measure moving forward is supported by the Guam Election Committee, the Commission?
Yes, ma'am.
And you saw that the bill was amended to address your concerns and make sure that the, that the citation on section 1010, 107 was in, included. Right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Chair, that's all I wanted to hear. And knowing that this has been proven successful based on what we had to experience during this global pandemic and know that moving forward, that this is an excellent measure to help those who want to vote for some reason but could, probably can't make it on the election day, that the opportunity of being able to vote no less than, no more than 30 days or less than five days before the election date. So hearing it from them, I, I'm good with the measure. And I, like I said, I want to thank the, the good author for, I don't know if he's from Timuning, but to make me a co-sponsor of this bill. So thank you. And thank you to the Guam Election Commission for being here on such short notice to be able to answer this inquiry. Situ masi.
Thank you, Madam Vice. Senator Brown, do you have any questions for the panel?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And thank you to Ms. Pangolinan and your staff and the Election Commission for coming down on such short notice. We're immensely impressed. Sometimes we have other directors that are busy in meetings and are not as responsive. So certainly appreciate you responding as quickly. I did want to ask, because it passed out a little earlier. This is a little after my last time in the Guam Legislature, in the 29th Legislature, where legislation had been passed to allow for early voting. Because of course, if you wanted to vote early, uh, you had to demonstrate you had to be off-island or, you know, you had a medical situation, you're in surgery or something to justify as to why you needed to vote early. And this, uh, the passage of this kind of move that requirement to allow the Election Commission to implement early voting. So I wanted to ask at this point, I mean, this is not the, we have the bill before us essentially allowing the same thing as a result of the pandemic, but this legislation was passed, goodness, 14, 13, 14 years ago. Um, so what are your thoughts on that? I mean, um, how did that change the Election Commission voting after this bill was passed in 2007 and signed into law leading up to the pandemic? Which we understand as a result of the pandemic, that of course, that was a very clear justification as to the need to space out and allow people to come in and vote and not, you know, feel uncomfortable waiting in long lines and things on the election day. Which I have to add again, Mrs. Pangolinan, to you and your staff, at least my, my two experiences in the primary, even though our initial vote didn't count because the primary was canceled. And then going back for the general election was a very smooth and, and very efficient process. It didn't really take that long to come in and, and, you know, get the assistance of your staff and go through the whole process. And then before you knew it, you know, you already completed the voting process. So I have to compliment you again on your efficiency in responding to the, the demand at the time to accommodate our residents to be able to vote. But could you elaborate on that? I mean, if you already have the ability to do this, uh, do you need additional legislation? Or is it simply perhaps just to make sure that the funding is there so that? And then explain what the funding is for? Because I know you have your staff there, you know, your regular eight to five. But if they're required to stay after hours or come in on the weekend, which may be more convenient for some people that are working in the weekdays or not able to come in. If you could just elaborate, how do we make all those interchangeable parts work? And do we need additional legislation at this point? If the previous law that was put in place 14 years ago is already there for you to, to use? Thank you.
Um, Senator Brown, uh, when the law was passed in 2007, um, it was implemented in 2008 with six staffers. Today, we have 14. We pick up three, uh, for the election cycle. For the 2020, on top of that, we picked up 10 temporary workers. Um, with the institutional knowledge I referred to, they were able to train the new folks and they were able to shadow them. But just so you know, because we want to accommodate the voters, we open up until 6 o'clock. And we, we open at 9 o'clock to get these guys ready. We leave there sometimes at 1 o'clock in the morning. Um, and, um, what's the difference between then and now? We do have the institutional knowledge. We have the number of staff. And the legislature has supported us with the appropriations that we come before you. Um, they, they give it to us. And Senator Brown, just so you know, um, we've also been attending professional development classes, um, across America. Two of us are certified in elections administration. We have three more that are up, coming up for certification. So, um, if we keep this team intact and we continue to do succession planning, we should be able to continue, um, to progress. We've had conversations on additional, um, progression with regard to electronic voting and all that. Um, we continue to safeguard to make sure that what is, um, what is put in place is appropriate for Guam. Um, again, you know, at that time, in 2008, there was a new director, brand-new director, had to, um, implement the new law right away. I believe at that time, there were 3,000 people that showed up for early voting. Um, and here, for the general election, there was 12,000. Um, and that's a very big difference.
So just with regards to the existing law that was put in place, that already authorizes the Guam Election Commission to conduct early voting without explanation by the voter, um, is there a need for additional legislation? I mean, we understand as a result of the pandemic, perhaps why a lot more focus was placed on, on early voting as a result of that for people. I mean, I normally, that's the only time I've ever early voted. I would normally go on the day of the election. It's almost been a family tradition to go and, uh, go collectively and go, go and vote. Uh, but do you need additional legislation other than funding to support your efforts? I mean, I think you have the system down pretty much. But if existing law, I guess previously sponsored by Senator Palacios and certainly my colleague that sits right behind me here, uh, during his first term in the legislature is the main sponsor of the bill, if you already have the authority to do it, irrelevant of the pandemic, do you need additional authority to conduct early voting? What more do you need if the law is already in place that allows you to conduct early voting?
Um, the, this bill will allow, only legislation will allow us to do early voting without excuse. Um, we, the, for 2020, it was just for 2020. If this bill does not pass, we revert back to, uh, in-office absentee voting with excuse.
I'm just asking about the previous legislation was passed in the 29th Guam Legislature that authorized the commission to conduct early voting without explanation by the voters. They didn't have to provide a reason as to why anymore they needed to come in early. They just could simply choose to do so.
I believe it was repealed by 3158.
I see. So you, do you know why it was repealed? Does anyone know why it was repealed?
Yes, because of the, um, I think because of the long lines that were created. Um, and because that, at that time, it wasn't implemented well.
Okay, so this is not the first round then? This is not innovative legislation then? It's been allowed before and for whatever reason it was repealed because the commission wasn't able to conduct the elections at the time in a way that could help facilitate voting?
Yeah. My perception.
And so moving forward now to simply go back and allow irrelevant of the pandemic then? I mean, because this was done, what, 14, 15 years ago? Um, you're geared up now to accommodate this process now? Is what you're relaying to us?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's 30 days? Because again, when we, we had the public hearing, we talked about the amount it was costing. And the additional cost, I assume, is these additional hours that have to be put in weekends, evenings, and then even after you close shop, I'm sure you have to get all your paperwork and all the envelopes, you know, in order and however you record all that. Um, that's where the additional cost comes into the commission?
Yes.
And we talked about on average, just estimating the 12,000 you had voted, it's about $29 a vote per voter?
Yes, because of our small voter population base.
Right. And, and just colleagues, just to elaborate, for those of you that weren't at the hearing, that was just a point of discussion. Uh, how much more was it costing on average for this last election? Per voter was about $29 more than what otherwise it would cost the taxpayers of Guam if people simply chose to show up on Election Day. And of course, I want to add on also, I mean, on the actual election day, you still have to put the same amount of infrastructure in place, irrelevant of how many people come to vote. Even if, you know, 12, 13, 15,000 show up to vote early and 5,000 show up on Election Day, you still have to put the same amount of structure, the same, make sure that you have everything in place to distribute ballots, collect ballots, and then of course, during the day oversee uh, the actual voting process per precinct throughout the island.
Yes, ma'am.
So you still have all those responsibilities. I wanted to ask, because I wasn't sure if I should, you know, put an amendment in to reduce the, the time. Uh, do you think that, for example, if we were to put 15 days, is that too short a period, do you think, with the volume of people that could show up? Do you think that 30 days is an adequate amount of time to allow voters to come in? Because I, I don't know what the trend's gonna be without, let's say, hopefully, this pandemic, you know, at least is in control and next year, we don't have the same concerns as we did last year. Is, is 30 days a comfortable period of time to, uh, allow the Election Commission to carry this out, this early voting process? And then still put in place what you need to execute the actual day of the election throughout the island and throughout the precincts?
Um, before 2000, before 2020, ma'am. Before 2000, before 2020, ma'am, in-office absentee voting took place 30 days before the election. Hence Guam Election Commission carried it forward. And in 2020, the 30 days worked out, but we, we want to close it five days before the election.
And just one quick question, because I know this was an issue in the past, in past elections. How are you able to clearly verify? Because we did have a circumstance where an individual voted early and then decided the day of the election, maybe they forgot, and then they showed up and voted on the day of the election. How are you able to catch that process to verify at each of the different precincts? I mean, I, I don't know now if it's done electronically or how do, how do you flag that? You know, when we come in, we have to show our driver's license or a form of ID and then we sign the voter log that we, you know, were there to vote? How, how can you verify, prevent that from happening so we don't? Sad to say, you know, that we wouldn't think anyone would want to abuse the voter process, but unfortunately, there are those that do.
So during early voting, we have a roster for both downstairs and upstairs. And so that roster is live. So we know when somebody, that roster keeps going on and records every voter that comes in, including the homebound voters now. On election day, if Senator, if Joanne Brown comes in to vote and because she forgot that she voted early, she can't, she possibly can vote again, but if the precinct official did not process her absentee ballot. So if your signature already appears on the roster, they will not process that absentee ballot.
Okay, so you will hold on to the absentee ballot till after the day of the, the actual election day? And then that's when you go back and verify so that if there's a, someone who votes twice, you can, you won't process their absentee vote then, is what you're saying?
Actually, on election day at the precinct.
I see. Okay, I just want to make sure, because we've seen that sort of thing happen. I know, Mr. Chairman, I'm only allowed to ask to this question, but just one little question. I want to ver, how do you verify citizenship? Because I do know that we sign that, you know, our life away, that, you know, under the penalty, even though I have to find out what the penalty of perjury is, I don't know if it's money, jail time, whatever. But how do you verify citizenship? Because that does concern me that if we certainly open up the law that, you know, under the penalty of perjury, I'm going to, I'm going to, you know, sign that I am a U.S. citizen, but I have to get on a plane, I have to fly out of Guam, I have to verify I'm a U.S. citizen or what my citizenship is. And I just, you know, it does concern me because of allegations in the past that individuals have shown up to vote, that are not eligible to vote and in trying to influence the electoral process. You know, I know that's the bigger issue that was argued in the last national election back in the U.S. mainland, but for little old Guam, we just want to make sure that that, that doesn't happen here. So how do you verify beyond me signing that I, I am a U.S. citizen, that I'm a resident of Guam, that I am eligible to vote? How do you verify that? And does the Election Commission go back randomly and go through a screening process to check so that there's a secondary or third level of review to make sure that that system is not being abused?
No, we just have our affidavit of registration. And on our affidavit of registration, we are letting our volunteer voter registrars know to let them, let the registrant initial after every section of that oath, including that he or she is a U.S. citizen. With regard to actual voting, if they vote early, they will sign the affidavit and say that I am a U.S. citizen by naturalization or by birth. That, we, in 2020, we caught a couple that were not U.S. citizens, so they did not, they, their, their ballots were not cast. Throughout the years, if you go through our affidavit of registration files, there are registrations that don't even have an ID connected to it. There are registrations where it's just a half a sheet of paper. Because if, if Joanne Brown voted since 2000, since 1994, that is the same registration we use. With early voting and the number of early voters, we've been able to update some of those files as you apply for early voting with that application form.
What is the penalty if I, if I signed? I understand, Mr. Chairman, but this is important. I think the election question is important. I just want to ask, what, what is the penalty if, if I am not a U.S. citizen and I went ahead and signed and I voted and, you know, a year later you find out I'm not a U.S. citizen? What's the penalty to me for signing and, and voting?
It's a third degree felony.
Okay. But you are not verifying? You're not verifying?
At this time, no.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the Election Commission.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Madam Speaker, do you have any questions? None? Or comments for the panel?
Thank you. And thanks for being here. Really appreciate it. Just clarifying, when Public Law 35-95 was passed, it provided for persons to vote during the 30-day in-office absentee voting period. But this talks, talks about not more than 30 days nor less than five days. This is going to be five days prior to the election and, but, but it's going to be for 30 days?
The whole time period will not be 30 days.
Right, it's going to be like 25? Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. So it's less than what we've done before. And does this bill, do you think, authorize you to do it anywhere other than your office? For example, voting centers or satellite offices or anything like that? Is that authorized by this bill?
Yes, just so long as we're the Guam Election Commission, wherever we have, we can, we can go to satellite locations like we did for the 2020.
Okay, can you show me that part of the bill? Or, Mr. Chair?
Senator, maybe it doesn't, it doesn't address it, but it doesn't disallow it either. Thank you for bringing it up. But as far as the Guam Election Commission sees, it does not disallow it.
Okay, so on page one on line eight, it says, applying in person at the office of said commission. Would that restrict them to applying for their absentee ballot in the office? But you're saying they can actually vote someplace else?
I would venture to say, and I'm not, you know, and we can clarify, it may need, it may need amendment, but we've interpreted it as wherever we establish office with regard to, if you remember, we went to Melesu, Mangila, Dedido and Gigo. If we establish office there, we bring our ballots there. But if it needs to be more clear...
Do you recommend that?
If, you know, now that you bring it up, ma'am, I think, you know, it could be, or it could be...
Ma'am, I'm asking, do you think that those field registration and voting sites are effective? And recommending, and recommend it?
Senator, Speaker, it's more convenient for the people from Melesu. And that's what we're trying to do is make it more convenient for them. That's being discussed with the staff as far as are we going to do that? And, you know, it seems to be that we're trying to service the voter and that is something that, that should or could happen.
Yeah, I agree with that. If, how does the commission decide which villages to conduct the, the voting in?
So we, one of the biggest things is logistics. We cannot do it in pneumatic. And then we look at our voter population across the villages. And I know that in Melesu, Speaker, we have people from Gigo drive down to Melesu to vote. So it's, it's not arbitrary. We do watch out for the venues most of all. We also watch out for the, the convenience of the voter.
I thought in the last election that you, you picked a good selection of places to have it and times. And there were some locations where, you know, because we were also campaigning, it's very active, right? Some less than the others, but, but it was still the pandemic, so it was very difficult. But all right. And I want to thank you for all your efforts during that time. I thought they were very effective and very efficient. And everybody commended, commented during that period about how efficient it was to vote. So I want to thank you. So I have full faith that you'll be able to implement this mandate and that it will be convenient for the voters. And knowing you, it's going to be extra convenient for the manamko if possible. And so I stand in support of this, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Majart, no questions. Senator Torres, any questions or comments for the panel?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up, Mrs. Panglinen, this almost seems like deja vu because you and I had these discussions before the last general election in 2018. And in fact, we, with consultation with you, I drafted a bill, 156-34, which changed the date of the primary elections from the last Saturday in August to the first Saturday in August. And it also moved up the date for filing nomination papers by, by, instead of at least 60 days prior to the holding of the primary to 90 days, at least 90 days. And at the time though, the, the main issue was the budgetary constraints and how the verification of the petitions for the primary only gave you 15 days to certify and prepare the ballots and mail them out to the, the overseas military personnel. So we were trying to help you save money and help with time and make it more efficient. That bill, 156-34, passed the legislature in October of 2017. Unfortunately, it was vetoed by the governor, which was a little unusual because the, the request came from the cabinet members and your agency. And the veto message was a little strange because it talked about a discrepancy between the use of nomination papers and nomination petitions. And, but nowhere in my bill did I ever use petitions. It was specifically the statute and the nomination paper. So maybe it just wasn't meant to be. But, you know, if, if, nonetheless, though, you were able to conduct, you know, the, the early voting for many people and you were able to pull it off. But of course, it does bring us back to straining your agency, the time constraints and also the overtime ramifications of that. So, you know, perhaps if, if, maybe working with the author of this bill right now, maybe, maybe that 156-34 bill can be resurrected if that's basically what you're saying is a suggested accommodation right now. You know, timing is everything, right? And maybe, maybe it just, I just wasn't the right person to introduce that bill at that time with that administration. But, but maybe now my good, my good colleague could be the right person to introduce it for this administration and it, it will pass again. So we'll, we'll resurrect that. But I just wanted to bring that up, that it is, it is a recurring discussion and we have been trying to help you and GEC, and we recognize that. So maybe again, we can try again. Thank you. I have no further comments.
Thank you, Senator Torres. At this point, my colleagues that completed the, the one round that was, that was part of the rules of engagement, I'll ask the panel to be excused. And thank you for showing up, Ms. Panglinen and Mr. Sinogstin.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, may I?
And then, you wanted to ask a question? Oh, okay then, I apologize. I thought you didn't want any question, but please, feel free.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the Guam election folks here today. Thank you very much. Just to start off, from my colleague from Santa Rita, I'll be more than happy to work with that situation. And I, I think this is helpful for understand, and understanding, Maria, what you meant by compartmentalizing. Right? So this bill, 120, we're just talking about early office absentee voting. If we don't compartment, make it small, right? Just talking about this subject, sometimes we, it could expand to something that may not go across as favorably. And I, I believe what the chairman was so helpful in saying, since he is the committee chair for Guam Election Commission and has been very helpful in, in supporting you folks, that let's, let's take one issue at a, at a time. Is, is that correct, what you mean by compartmentalizing?
Yes, yes, Senator.
In the Army, I think the chairman knows an acronym that we use, that we use often. First letter starts with K and then it's I and so forth. But, but I appreciate that very well. So you had the bill, the, the substitute version there. Have we addressed your concerns that you put in writing to the amendments that you wanted?
Yes, Senator.
Okay, thank you. And then also, well, there's, there's several, but, but let me try to summarize a lot here. What, is this, can you please reiterate why this bill is important to the Guam Election Commission?
Our biggest job is voter participation. And it has been said, we've seen in 2020 that early voting brings out, brought out 12,000 voters. We think that we can minimize the spiral or the decline of voter participation with the enactment of early voting law. Thank you.
Thank you. You also mentioned that though this bill doesn't have the specific wording on where you should have this early voting at, that your interpretation, and who interprets that? You have the authority to do that, please.
Senator, we do have legal counsel, but the clearer the law, the better the implementation. With what Speaker Terlahe brought about, addressing the office of said commission, I don't know what it'll take or I don't know how that will be tried. But with everything else, I, you know, unless somebody else has something, we've addressed everything else. And again, Senator, we have legal counsel. Legal counsel works with us on a daily basis with regard to our operations. And the, there was discussion in the commission meetings about satellite voting and taking it to the villages because of the, you know, at that, because of the pandemic and making it more convenient for the voter.
Thank you. And then for, if this bill was to pass, I, I think, how confident are you with your committee chair that you can receive the budget necessary to, to move this forward?
Senator, if it's not in the appropriation bill, I will be before the legislature to request early.
Thank you and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Moynihan. That being said, we've completed and I'd like to thank again, Ms. Sinogstin, Ms. Panglinen and Mr. Sinogstin for their attendance, their quick response. We appreciate it. Thank you for all coming. My colleagues that ended our, our round of questions, and as soon as the executive director and his, or chief of staff, I guess, Sinogstin, you know, it's okay. My colleagues, this just advised you that we don't have any, we don't, there's no amendments... My colleagues, this just advised you that we don't have any, we don't, there's no amendments in the system. So I would immediately proceed to recognize Mr. Moilen. Senator Moilen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I move to rise from committee as a whole with the recommendations that Bill Number 12036-COR, as substituted by Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriation and Housing, be placed on the third reading file.
On that motion, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries.
We're back in session. Senator Sinogstin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wish to report back to the body after deliberation of Bill 120-36-COR, as substituted by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriation and Housing, that the recommendation of the committee of the whole is to place Bill 120-36 to the third reading file.
On that motion to accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Sis, just, Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion that we move, proceed into the third reading voting file to vote on Thursday at 10:00 a.m. And shortly after the voting, we'll entertain several bills that are awaiting addition to the session agenda.
We'll revert to second reading?
Correct, we will revert to second reading.
All right. On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, we're recessed till Thursday at 10:00 a.m.